Good morning, everyone. We're going to start our junior board meeting. I think we're coming. This time, we're going to call it order. And Mr. Slade, you going to pray for us, please?
Yes, sir, I will. Mr. President, Mr. President Pro Tem, we are, we're going to start by acknowledging on the minutes that we barely meet our core requirements. So, nobody move.
We just got quality, we got quality, not quantity.
Let's pray. Father, what a glorious day you've given us today. On this occasion, Father, when we come before you first and foremost, asking for your blessing on our time today. I pray that your presence would be very powerful and real for us. Lord, that we would find that your wisdom and discernment has been freely given to these men. Pray that as they deliberate and go through the order of business that you've called them to carry out, Lord, on our behalf as citizens here, that the wisdom that you give them, Father, will be pleasing. The outcome, the results, will be pleasing in your sight. Father, I pray that those men and women, one of whom we'll honor today, Lord, who do such a great job of protecting and serving our community. They look out for our safety. They protect us, Lord. Those men and women deserve much praise. I pray, Father, that you will bless them and bless their families in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Greg. We don't have anyone sign up for the comment, but we do have the opportunity to honor one of our own, soon to be really one of our own. He's given his life in service. And at this time, Mr. Slade, you have a resolution? Do you like to present on our behalf?
Gentlemen, it's a, it's a privilege for us to be able to honor, to congratulate and commend one of our very own, Scott Berry, who has served so faithfully for over thirty-four years as fire chief, most recently as the fire chief at Reservoir Fire Department, been doing that for a long time, and has faithfully served that department and that community well. And so, it is a real privilege for us to be able to honor Scott on the occasion of his retirement. And so, Scott, I'm going to ask you to come forward, please. Christie, his wife, please come forward. Didn't warn her ahead of time that she's going to stand up here. Sarah, would you come forward, please? This is their daughter, Sarah. They have another daughter, Rachel, guys, who is right now in Colorado. She's serving on a church mission. And we're excited to be able to say that. Wish she was able to be here, but understand why she can't be here. And so, Josh, I'm going to ask you to come on as well. And this is Josh Wells. And you're now looking at the, the new chief of the Reservoir Fire Department. Big shoes to fill, brother. And we're excited for you as well, Josh. And thank you for being here honoring Scott as well. And so, I'm going to read this resolution and then give Scott an opportunity, if he wishes to, to address the crowd. I've just put him on the spot. I told him I wasn't, he didn't have to do that. But I'm going to force him to say something. So, let me read this for you guys and for Scott and his family. Whereas, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors has consistently recognized our county's full-time and volunteer, volunteer fire services as a vital component of what makes Rankin County a desirable and safe place to live and raise a family. Whereas, the Reservoir Fire Department under the leadership of Chief Scott Berry has been a model of consistent, outstanding exemplary fire and emergency response service, as well as a wonderful partner with the Rankin County Board of Supervisors in serving and protecting the citizens of Rankin County for decades. Whereas, in recognizing the leadership of Chief Scott Berry and the importance of the Reservoir Fire Department, it is noteworthy that Chief Berry began his service to the department in nineteen eighty-nine and rose through the department ranks to become his chief in nineteen ninety-six, a position that he has held ever since. It's noteworthy that Chief Berry is a certified emergency medical technician and has over one thousand, one hundred hours of training through the Mississippi Fire Academy. Chief Berry is a graduate of the Mississippi Executive Fire Officer Program and has his Mississippi Fire Chief designation and is a lifetime member of the Mississippi Firefighters Association. He's also served terms as both Vice President and President of the Mississippi Fire Chiefs Association. And whereas, in twenty twenty-two, Chief Scott Berry was nominated for and was awarded Fire Chief of the Year by the Mississippi Fire Chiefs Association, an honor that is well-earned and is commensurate with the exemplary leadership that Scott Berry has displayed over his long and incredibly successful career. And whereas, Jay's already alluded to this, by the way, Chief. Whereas, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors is excited that although Chief Berry is retiring from service as the chief of the Reservoir Fire Department, this will not mark the end of Chief Berry's service to the citizens of Rankin County. And we look forward to the next, next chapter of service by Chief Berry. I'll let you fill in the blank for what that is. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rankin County Board of Supervisors congratulates and commends Chief Scott Berry on thirty-four years of dedicated service to the citizens of Rankin County as a member of the, and chief of the Reservoir Fire Department. That's resolved this fifth day of June, twenty twenty-three. Chief, this is signed by all five of my supervisors and by our Chancery Clerk, Mr. Swales. And I want to present this to you as the original. We're going to get some photos here of the chief while Chuck is staging everything. If you have anything you want to say, I'll be, we would appreciate that.
I'll be brief and try not to let my voice crack too much, but I'm, I'm proud to have served this county, to, to serve. The, the support from the Board of Supervisors, from the supporting cast, through, through the whole county sheriff's office, everybody involved. It's, it's not one person, it's not me. I, I, I've said it to Chief Swales many, many times. And it's, it's, you know, I would not be here without him and without my family. And, and I'm thankful and I really appreciate this one. Bless you.
Great. Congrats.
Appreciate it. Congratulations.
All right. Next round of dinner, we have old business.
Motion motion approved.
Say. Motion by Jared to approve, old minutes. Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion by Brad?
Yes, second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Caroline.
Good morning.
That's Larry's job, keep the podium in the middle.
I don't know what the problem is.
Oh.
Let's bring it back into Rankin County.
Is that good for you?
Might need to loop those wheels, huh?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Keith told me I had thirty seconds, so let me see how fast I can get. Item A, petition for a change of assessment on twenty twenty-two personal and real property assessment.
Motion approved.
Second.
B, authority to void personal property tax receipts and any penalty or interest incurred for the month of June, because this was dated as of May, for tax years twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen in the amount of one twenty-four thirty-six and one twenty-eight eighty-one on PPIN one oh nine seven.
Motion approved.
Say.
Hang on. Let's take, we'll take A and B.
Yeah.
So, we have motion approved both of those and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thought that was supposed to kind of happen.
Keep up with it.
Item C, authority to void and adjust tax receipt for PPIN six four nine zero for the corrected amount of two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the city of Florence due to an erroneous calculation.
Motion approved.
Motion by Jared?
Say.
Second by Brad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, authority to pay registration fees for continuing education for the Mississippi Tax Collector and Certification Program in the amount of thirty dollars each for twenty of the tax collector employees and the authority to issue the check.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second by Brad, second by Jared. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item E, authority of appropriate, for the appropriate signatory to execute third-party online tax sale agreement between Rankin County and GOVies for the twenty twenty-three tax, online tax sale. This agreement provides for a conditional cost-neutral outcome for the county in that the per parcel fee has changed by the third-party vendor and may be captured for reimbursement when the property sold at the tax sale or later redeemed through the Office of the Chancery Clerk.
That, guess, guess who drew that up?
Yeah.
The, gentlemen, the, the short answer there is, this is a, this is a revised agreement with GOVies. It's the same deal we've had, except the AG's office has opined that now the county can charge the tax, the taxpayer for the cost of the property going through the tax sale. And so, this is, the agreement now lets GOVies help us collect a reimbursement for the cost. So, cost-neutral means you, we will pay GOVies for the service, but we will get it back when the property goes back through the redemption process. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, we'll, we'll be getting most of our costs back.
Right.
This is a good thing.
I'm making motion approved.
Motion by Brad, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that wasn't thirty seconds, but I can't be charged by this time.
Hey, later today, I need, I need to holler at you. I'm just reminding you, I need to try to holler at you about the situation. Just what I'm thinking about. I'll call you. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Bridget.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item this morning. I'm requesting approval of a copier contract with Southern duplicating for the tax assessor's office.
Motion approved.
Motion by Jared?
Say.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bridget. Ms. Harris.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, request approval for energy utility permit to replace existing transmission line along and across Old Brandon Road, District Four.
Motion approved.
Motion by Jared?
Say.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mike, did they actually fill out a permit?
Transmission grid permit, too. That's totally different than the distribution grid and everything else. Transmission grid.
Progress. First energy permit that I'm familiar with that they actually filled out.
I think they only did it because it's crossing the state aid road.
Okay. But it's still progress, right? They actually filled out a permit? I'm, I'm gobsmacked, smashed.
They initially sent it to our office and we turned them on to the process of how you get a permit in Rankin County is to go to the permit department. So, they did go to that.
How about that?
The good thing is, is they're getting a permit, so.
I'm glad. Well, Jay's not going to let me say any more than that, so I'm just saying, I'm saying just enough. That's as much as I can say.
I understand.
All right.
We're good to go, Jack.
Yeah.
Authorize renewal professional service contract with ChemPro Service LLC, chemical control application on public right-of-ways authorized by the Board of Presby to execute, execute, Doc.
Make motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Brad, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Hey.
Mike, is that two terms?
Go ahead. I got a question whenever.
That's two, that's going to be two times this summer, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
I got a question. Hey, we still got a long arm.
What day?
All right. That's what make sure I got some places we need to use it.
Okay, well, I mean, while y'all asking that, I'll go into work. You know, a little bit, I won't wait till additional, but I'll go ahead and do it. I mean, y'all know we're in the stage and I let Craig fill in a little bit of the gap right there with elections going on. We're in the stage of no hiring, no anything, so.
We're in the last six months of the term.
Right.
And there are restrictions under state law with respect to expenditures related to the road department and also personnel related to road department. Both of those have specific statutory limitations on the last six months of your term. So, Mike is going to be burdened with the personnel that he has now and not able to add personnel during this interim.
What are you down to?
We're down to about sixty-two right now.
Well.
And I'm not saying that don't have nothing to do with you long on that.
All I'm saying, I can't, that ain't going to go very well when you say, sorry, guys, we.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we can't get to it. But I mean, we're trying to pave and chip seal and, you know, I'm telling you.
We have to get to everything with who we have and with the budget we have.
Hey, when do we need to talk about, I think that, about the chip seal and such? I got some questions about that.
We think we'll start it up next week?
Yep. Well, I don't know about chip seal, but the micro there here.
Yeah.
Micro fixing the fire up, chip seal going on.
I need to talk to you then. Uh, well, I can talk to you now, as far as that goes.
Yeah. Well, here, why don't we just.
Well, let's, yeah, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and do everything.
All in favor, say aye.
We do that additional business.
Aye. Aye's having, aye.
Okay.
We'll do additional business.
Yes, I think it'd be better.
Nice.
Yep.
Ms. Parker.
Morning.
Morning.
We have two items this morning. First item is on Freedom Farms Phase Four. We're recommending approval of the construction drawings. That's a District Four project. I've talked to Mr. Gaines, and he's good with it. Ready to move forward.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brad, second by Jared. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye's having.
Uh, second item is Mill Creek Stabilization Project. That's in the ARPIT's program element two oh five. We, you should have in front of you a bid tab. We took bids last week. The low bidder was Southeastern Pipeline and Environmental Services at one million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. We're recommending award.
What, what was our estimate on that?
Our estimate's two point six.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so they're considerably lower. One thing they have that, I think some of the, they have a lot of their own grinding-type equipment. They're, they're in this, they do a lot of this type of business, so that they're not subbing that out. And I think that may have been part of what got them low. I mean, obviously, you could say there's a pretty good gap between first and second.
Where is this outfit out of?
They're out of Hazelhurst, Missouri. They, uh, we did call them after the bid and notified them where they were. And they said, let's review our bid. And obviously, they had twenty-four hours to withdraw it. They talked back the next morning and said, we're good with it. We feel good. They, we actually had a pre-development, a pre-bid meeting, excuse me, on this project. They attended that, asked questions. We have no reason to believe they're not confident in their number.
Mr. Cross, although he's not here, he did want, asked me to deliver a message to the board, and it is, don't, don't get any ideas. He has designs on what to do with the rest of the money.
Good thing it takes three to make that happen.
Yeah.
All right. We can make motion to rebid it.
Oh, yes, we can. We sure can. But it's kind of hard when it's coming in under.
I'm making motion to approve.
We can put those stipulations on it. We either rebid it or we'll scatter this other money somewhere else.
I made a motion to.
Three ways.
Yeah. Motion by Brad, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye's having.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. Mr. Slade.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item under my section is a public hearing on the Jesse Odom and Bonnie Bentley conditional use permit. This will be at Levi Cooper Road. This is District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. At this time, and Mr. President and others, I have condition, proposed conditions that have been put together by the staff that I'll be prepared to read at the appropriate time. Let me walk you through the, the request. Jesse Odom and Bonnie Bentley are seeking a conditional use permit to construct a five thousand-square-foot wedding and event venue on Levi Cooper Road. It's a one-hundred-and-ten-acre parcel. It's zone A two. They have plans to add a chapel, outdoor patio in the future. Proposed hours of operation Monday through Thursday, nine to five, Friday through Sunday, six AM to ten-thirty PM. Applicants want to see if they can be approved of this use before they provide detailed drawings. The driveway parking areas proposed as gravel. Property was posted. Notice of the hearing has been published in the paper. Have received several calls concerning primarily the condition of Levi Cooper Road. One caller specifically was in opposition of the request. And so, that public hearing is open. At this time, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Jesse Odom and Bonnie Bentley conditional use permit, Levi Cooper Road. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. There are conditions. With your permission, I'll review those and, and see to it whether or not the board wants to stand by each of these conditions or alter them. The first is, the applicants must address any concerns with respect to the condition of Levi Cooper Road to the board's satisfaction, which may include the requirement to provide a letter of credit in an amount sufficient to cover the county's costs to repair or improve Levi Cooper Road as a result of the proposed use. The callers who were in opposition or raised concerns concerning the public road indicated that the traffic will increase and that the condition of the road is currently not good. Two vehicles cannot pass. And there was concern about the use of the property in relation to the condition, the, the safety condition of the road. And so, the, the idea behind that particular condition would be that if there are issues, by having a letter of credit in place, it requires the applicant to put skin in the game as it relates to any repairs or improvements to Levi Cooper Road. So, that would be one condition. Second condition, any overnight or short-term occupancy of the structure, including the use of the structure and the nature of a residence, such as an Airbnb or a VRBO type of arrangement, is prohibited. So, no overnight residential-type use of the property as in the nature of an Airbnb, VRBO, some type of rental arrange, short-term rental arrangement. RV travel trailer rental activity on the property is prohibited. The conditional use permit is approved exclusively for Jesse Odom and Bonnie Bentley. It cannot be transferred to any third party without the approval of the Board of Supervisors. Any attempted transfer without approval of the Board of Supervisors will render the permit void, and it will subject the applicants or the member owners to potential liability and penalties. There will be, the next condition, and this is very important, given the fact that it is A two and the surrounding community is A two. There shall be no future requests from the applicants or any approved successor or assign to the Board of Supervisors to restrain or enjoin or prevent any land use on neighboring properties that is permitted in the A two zone. Agricultural intensive is what that is, including but not limited to the discharge of firearms or the keeping of farm animals. So, that's a condition. Neither the applicants nor any successor in interest approved by the board is able to bring a complaint about neighboring land uses that are already permitted in A two. Final condition, the applicants, their successors or assigns will waive any right to object to any real or personal property out of a law enforcement conducted by the tax assessor as to any real and personal property that is subject, the subject of the application. So, those would be the conditions that the staff would recommend. And I'll let you guys decide which of these or all of these or none of these you choose to append to your approval, should you choose to approve the condition.
Mr. Slade, the first item on the condition, is that like we were talking about maybe acquiring a right-of-way in the future of widening.
That's, that's correct. So, so, A.
Actually, it's open-ended, though, you know? If it was me, I wouldn't go into this just having a car block letter of credit for any improvements. I mean, I would never be in favor of any damage done to the road, repaired to the road for, you know, as far as where construction of the property. But being on the hook, I mean, it's not going to be that much traffic over there once they're open.
No. Another thing, we can't, they can't be responsible. I don't think they'd be responsible for anything that happens to the road. I mean, any kind of wear. I mean, it could be normal. I mean, garbage trucks and everything create some problem.
We, we tried to make the condition clear that it's as a result of the proposed use. So, if, if another.
You want to get what I'm saying? How you going to know if this is a result from the proposed use? Now, if during construction, whatever breaks inside the road or whatever, that'd be different, but.
What, what could happen? What we could do here is condition the letter of credit to have like a, a time limitation on it during the, during the first year of operation. And that way, you cover the construction period, Jared, and you recover, and you cover some short period of time with the initial use of the property to kind of get an idea of how that traffic pattern is going to be.
I, I just want something in place for, because this is probably one of the ruralest places in Rankin County. And it's things we're going to develop out. And I'd like to be able to go ahead on the front side when somebody comes to us with property they want to purchase and be willing to give us, say, thirty foot from the center of Levi Cooper.
Their property.
Yeah, their property. So, we don't have to go back in the future. We'll survey it, but it already be in the condition.
I thought you were wanting them to pay for all the right-of-way down to, up to their point. So, all right.
Yeah, that's kind of the way I took it.
Yeah.
Any damage to the road.
No, we would just want the applicants themselves to understand. We need, i- i- if the current property line vests in the center of the road, I don't know what the right-of-way line is.
It's probably either to the asphalt, because it was a gravel road one time.
It's probably back a ditch.
I'm sure it's back a ditch, back a ditch right now.
What, whatever the additional right-of-way that needs to be acquired by the county to make it a full sixty feet across, what portion of that additional right-of-way that falls on the applicant's property? We would expect that to be donated to the county.
That way, if one day it was improved, we would already have that.
You have the thirty feet.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't know if they do, but I don't have a problem with that.
Right. So, the, the condition, Brad, I think what we need to do is to decide, this group needs to decide, are we going to require a letter of credit? are we going to require a letter of credit? That's the first one. And then the second one is, do we insert in this condition that the applicant will donate the right-of-way that is required so that the county acquires a full 60 feet of right-of-way? They may only be required to donate five feet additional, and we'll get the other five feet from the other side. But, but we need 60 feet of right-of-way on Levi Cooper, and right now, what we have is what I'll call a, it's a prescriptive right-of-way at best. So, back a ditch to back a ditch, whatever we've been maintaining, and that's probably 50 feet, max, so we know going.
I doubt 50 feet there. I doubt it is.
It's probably about 30.
Yeah, so let's assume that it's 30 feet.
On there, on theirs, if their property doesn't go on both sides of the road, we're just taking maybe 20 feet.
Yes, sir. Whatever is required for us to get a total of 60.
In a future date that we can come in and widen both sides.
If we choose.
If we choose to.
If it needs to.
We might have to go acquire a right-of-ways like we've been doing.
Right. Help me, do we, do we do the letter of credit thing? Let me tell you what that is.
I don't know.
For, primarily for use with developers, where we've got subdivision development activity. We are authorized under our development ordinance to require the developer to post a letter of credit. We use letters of credit, and this is not for you guys, y'all understand, but this is for others listening. We use letters of credit because that puts the county in the most secure and best position. If the actions of the developer, or in this case, the applicant, are such that we have damage on the road and we can tie it to the use, the land use, as causing the damage to the road, we then are in a position where we make one demand. We tell the applicant that the road has to be repaired, and you need to work through our engineer to know exactly how it needs to be repaired, and you can do that yourself.
See, I mean, to me, that's confusing, because you're saying damage to the road from vehicles that's coming to their facility.
I mean, it's a public road, it's not a problem with that.
I mean, we can't control on who's going.
Well, it would have to be for during construction, really, you know, like heavy.
During the construction side of, if we're widening.
So, maybe the condition just needs to be a letter of credit and an appropriate amount determined by the engineer for a period of one year.
Well, I would say, I mean, if we're going to do that, I'm not real fond of the period, but if we're going to do that, yeah, this needs to be through the construction period, because that's the only time I could see concrete trucks.
The road might get damaged.
Uh, delivery trucks or whatever creating a problem.
So rather than putting a timeline, why don't you say during construction?
The reason is that the lenders are going to require them to take out a one-year letter of credit. They don't, they don't do a six-month. It'll be for a year.
I don't see we doing anything in one year on Levi Cooper.
Well, I was saying, it probably takes a couple. But not, I was talking about, the only thing we're going to put them on the hook for is if during construction, some of the heavy equipment damages the road. So I don't think I'll log it, you know, I don't know what all has to be done on that property to get it where they can build it.
If it's normal, normal wear, we don't need to, that's something we'd have to be decide. I mean, you know, I mean, it starts caving out, I think what you're trying to cover is if it starts collapsing and coming all to pieces, kind of like we've had in the past.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it ought to be, yeah.
I don't know, Brad, what you want to do?
I mean, I'm, of course, going to prove there, prove it, but I just want to make sure that we have, we all understand that, I mean, in the future date, that trying to get ahead of the game in the future of Levi Cooper is a process of getting this road widened to make it.
And it might never happen.
It might not never happen, but I don't want them to be burdened with keeping up with a letter of credit from, I mean.
Well, it's only going to be for during construction.
It can be one-year increments. There's a renewal, there's a process of renewal.
What's the cost of that to them?
Well, I don't know. Each bank charges their own fees associated with a letter of credit, Brad. I will tell you from experience that they are a fraction of what the actual letter of credit amount is. So if the, if the letter of credit amount was 20,000, they could expect to pay 500 bucks for a letter of credit. They'll have to put up security at the bank, but, but the, the letter of credit fee will be fairly nominal, in the neighborhood of about 500 bucks. And that would go for a year. It would stand valid for a year if there is a renewal. So as soon as they get a renewal notification from the bank, hey, this letter of credit's about to renew, they can approach the county and say, are we in a place now, everybody's satisfied that we can ask for a release of the letter of credit? And we tell the bank, we're good to go. The bank releases the collateral.
Yeah, we can just put in, you know, that they'll be responsible for damage to the road during construction.
Do it that way. There's just, it's all on them complying at that point, right? And your option is not then to just send something to the bank and say, that says, hey, send me the money?
Yeah.
Good news for them is we understand the road ain't that great a shape, so it'd be that less to repair.
It's just narrow's the main thing.
Yeah, narrow.
Yeah. I mean, it's not deplorable, it's just narrow.
Right, right.
Would y'all like to say anything?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward.
Yeah, I'd like to be a part of this.
Because y'all are investing a lot of money in Rankin County, and we just trying to, good morning. Just state your name for the record.
I'm Bonnie Bentley.
And I'm Austin Odom.
My daughter Jessie is working this morning, so she couldn't get on. As far as the, the construction on the road, yes, we will have construction going on, but right now, currently, and from what I understand, our neighbors are also, they have a lot of construction going on too. They're building homes on both sides of the house, of that road.
Yeah.
So, it's not just our construction.
Right. I just don't understand how you can like, basically, say, all right, my, my concrete truck comes and pulls my slab for the road up.
And we agree with that. I mean, that's why we, we talking this out, trying to figure out the best way.
We're not, we're not cutting any more trees, there won't be any logging on the property, all there will be is concrete, and we're getting most of the dirt off of the place, so it won't be hauling that much dirt either.
All I want is to be able to, in the future, to, if we decide, the county decides to widen this road that we already have, a right-of-way from y'all.
And we're good with that.
We'll just do that. We'll just do that, since he already got construction going on there. It's going to be kind of hard for us to say they created a problem.
I wouldn't worry, we had two houses being built there, so, yeah, that would be difficult.
That's the reason we want y'all to step up.
We may need to check our building permits and make sure we know that.
Don't tell them I told you.
It's just being streamed live right now.
Yeah, that's right.
Wow.
Yeah, you're on, you're recording.
But y'all, y'all would be good with going ahead and.
And when we get to that point to where we decide we want to widen Levi Cooper, we'll have our county survey come out and serve that, survey from the center of the line, and everywhere 30 feet from that, on the backside of that ditch is where.
Just on, just on your property.
On your property.
We all want on both sides, so.
Y'all do on both sides? Okay.
If you have a problem with that, we're just looking, I know what he's doing, looking down the road, in the event something could come up and the road could be improved, we would have some room, at least to your property, to work with.
I don't think you'd have a problem with anybody.
I don't think we would either.
Yeah. Okay. Y'all good with that?
Yeah.
I do want to stress to the folks, since they're here, one of the conditions is that the, the conditional use permit that they're about to vote on, assuming that they vote in favor of granting that, it's not assignable without their permission. So, this business goes forward and people come to you and say, hey, we'd like to buy y'all out, that's fine. It's just they need to approve that, a board, whatever board is here at that time, will have to approve that assignment. That conditional use permit is not going to travel automatically. They will, they will dictate who gets it.
It had to, it had to be renewed, basically, to whoever was purchasing the property, if that be the case. I mean, y'all have any other questions?
I don't.
All right, do we need to redo anything on the conditions?
We can, I can press the conditions.
So we can just go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion to approve, preparing for Jesse Odom and Bonnie Bentley.
And that will be with the conditions espoused, with the exception that we're going to adjust the condition related to Levi Cooper Road. We're going to fix that for you, Brad.
Okay, thank you.
Motion by Brad, taken by Jared, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Ayes have. That hearing is closed, and the record will reflect that nobody showed up in opposition to speak on that matter. Item B, Mr. President, is a public hearing on the Al and Stephanie Tadlock conditional use permit at 3992 Highway 80. This is District 4 property. We'll open that public hearing. Al and Stephanie Tadlock are seeking a conditional use permit to replace a manufactured home at 3992 Highway 80. They live in a manufactured home on his mother's property for 27 years. The home burned in March of this year. It's a 20-acre parcel and is zoned RE1. RE1 allows a manufactured home as a conditional use in a temporary hardship or emergency situation. Mr. Tadlock's mother is 88 years old and needs Mr. and Ms. Tadlock close by to be able to provide care for her and to maintain the property. Renee's office has received a letter from her physician that documents her medical care needs. The property has been posted, a notice of public hearing has been published in the newspaper. We've not received any calls in opposition. At this time, that hearing is open, and I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Al and Stephanie Tadlock conditional use permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We have two conditions that have been discussed with Steve, since this is his district. Property cannot be further subdivided without board authorization, and the manufactured home that is located on the property may not be used as rental property. Those are the two conditions. So we would ask that the, that the use be approved with those conditions.
Do you have a motion? I'll make the motion to approve with the conditions.
Motion by Brad, taken by Jared, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Okay, that matter is closed. Let the record reflect that no one showed up in opposition on that matter. Item C, Mr. President, is a public hearing on the Joseph Douglas Baldwin conditional use permit, 229 Leaning Oak Cove. This is District 4 property. That, that hearing is open. Joseph Douglas Baldwin is seeking a conditional use permit to convert an existing pole barn into a barn dominium with metal siding at 229 Leaning Oak Cove. It's 13-acre parcel. It's zoned RE1. The structure will have a white metal siding with black trim and gutters. All three of the adjoining neighbors have given Mr. Baldwin their approval. The property was posted, notice of public hearing was published in the newspaper. We have not received any calls in opposition on that matter. Ms. Renee, I don't see any, we don't have any proposed, do we have proposed conditions on that? Okay. At this time, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Joseph Douglas Baldwin conditional use permit. Is anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Okay. Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brad, taken by Jared, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item, item D, Mr. President, first, item C, public hearing is closed. Let the record reflect that no one showed up to speak in opposition on that matter. Item D, it's a public hearing for the Ronnie Williamson conditional use permit, 1140 Highway 469 North, this is District 1 property. That public hearing is open. Mr. Williamson is seeking a conditional use permit to mine 18 acres at 1140 Highway 469 North. He plans to dig in three areas of the, of the property approximately to a depth of four feet. He will be selling that dirt. He needs to lower these areas so that the property will drain better. Once completed, topsoil will be applied and the property will be placed for sale. Mr. Williamson has applied to DEQ to mine the 18 acres. They are requesting confirmation of zoning approval from the county. Property was posted, notice of public hearing was published, they have received, our office has received several calls, but no one indicated that they were opposed to the, to the request. Okay? So at this time, that public hearing is open. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Ronnie Williamson conditional use permit request. Is there anyone here?
All right, come forward.
Step forward, I'll need a name and an address. Mr. President, we have several conditions that we are going to request, that we have identified as a staff, that I'll be glad to review. It could be that the conditions that we.
You want to read the conditions?
That was one idea that I had.
You want to hear the conditions?
Let them read the conditions, that way.
Yeah. And this is basically for, I'm basically preparing to reclaim, reclaim the property.
Yes, sir.
In what I think wasn't brought up, you're talking about doing this and getting these hot spots out to reclaim, and then reclaim the property.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, correct.
I, I think the activities are to get the property in a condition where it is in the best place that it can be to sell.
Also, a bit of reclaiming as far as putting topsoil instead of.
Yes, the topsoil would, would allow for some type of vegetative material to be there that holds the soil, so you prevent further erosion there.
Right.
All right, so here are the conditions that the staff has indicated should be considered by the board. Hours of operation for the activities that are being requested here, 7:30 a.m. to sunset Monday through Saturday, so no operations on Sunday. Install signage at the point of ingress, egress, trucks entering and exiting roadway. This is to allow for traffic safety. Place one flagman at 469 North entrance to the mine, so that, again, traffic safety. The conditional use permit is granted for 18 acres as shown on the MDEQ application for surface mining permit. That's simply to acknowledge that this is what the permit controls. It's a defined area of 18 acres. We, we have a place here with direction from the board as far as the expiration of the conditional use. That is a timeframe by which the applicant will need to be complete with this request, and so the board will need to give us instructions, how long will the conditional use permit stay in place? So, be thinking about that. We need help on that. 12 months, 18 months, 24 months. What is the time period that we're going to allow this permit to remain in place and then automatically expire? The applicant will provide an on-site water truck during all hours of operation to address any dust conditions. The applicant will monitor the speed of transport vehicles in the vicinity of the pit and use every conceivable means to prevent speeding or unsafe driving practices by anybody that's hauling dirt out of that pit. The applicant will clean all dirt and debris from the public road on a daily basis and maintain a clean road during hours of operation. The applicant will secure from the Rankin County Road Department a specific haul route for all dirt hauling activities, and will strictly enforce that haul route for each vehicle entering or exiting the pit. The applicant will immediately notify the Rankin County Road Department upon discovering any damage to the public road surface being occasioned by hauling activities, and the applicant will take steps to prevent damage or address damage when identified. So those are the conditions that the staff has, is recommending be appended to any approval of the conditional use application. So at this time, it'd be appropriate to allow anyone to speak in opposition, come forward.
If you would, just state your name and address.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mark Padelford, P-A-D-E-L-F-O-R-D. I live at 1052 Highway 469 North. My, my wife and I own 43 acres that are joins Mr. Williamson's property. I have a common line with him of 1,320 feet. We have a, we have a seven-acre lake on our property, and at some points, I'm going to kind of tell you what's been going on for years, okay? But at some points, that lake is only 140 or 150 feet away from where he's digging dirt. Now, to start off with, when I met him, I think in 2015, he told me that he was going to build four or five really nice houses with big lots, it'd be a really nice place. Well, after a while, we saw dirt trucks coming in and out, digging dirt out of the property, and didn't understand why we weren't notified that there was going to be a dirt pit next door. Now, let me show you this. This, this is his dirt pit, and that's my lake right here, and I live right here.
Is any silt or anything coming off of his place on?
I think he'll tell you about. Means he's trying to fix it up too big.
All right.
He couldn't have silt fixed.
He couldn't have been that. He's a hill state.
So we have, this lake was built in the 20s, it's been there almost 100 years. We've owned the property since 1965, my family's been there that long. In 2005, we rebuilt the dam and restocked the lake with catfish, bream, and bass. There has never been any mud in that lake. It has always been, it'll turn green when we fertilize it, but it's never been brown. Now, after he started digging, of course, here comes the dirt and the water running into the northeast end of our property, and it looked like, I went and talked to him, he put up some silt fences that slowed the problem down for a while. Couple of years later, it started again. As he would dig towards the highway, there's a ditch up there, and water and dirt would run in that ditch, and through it, Ms. Terry will speak in a minute, through her property and into the end of our lake. At that point, I decided to let, I normally cut the grass all the way around the lake, but at that point, I decided to let the grass grow to slow down the dirt coming in. And that's helped a lot, the lake is cleaned up, but it wasn't because of his efforts, it was because of mine. In 2021, I just got tired of the problem, so I called Mississippi Environmental Quality and filed a complaint. They came out and inspected the property. Two people, Justin Berry, who is in their stormwater division, and a lady named Kim Manley, who was a scientist, environmental scientist, came out. And I asked them, what are y'all, what you going to do about it? He said, the first thing we're going to do is pull their permit and see what it says. They pulled the permit. He had a permit for four acres, to dig on four acres, and he was digging on 27. So, he was fine, and he blames me for costing him a lot of money, but he caused himself plenty by his dishonesty. Now, we found out years later, you know, that the reason he only got a permit for four acres was because he didn't have to notify any neighbors. Because if the neighbors around there had known a dirt pit was going in, we would have raised cane about it. And I doubt there's anybody in this room that really wants a dirt pit next to where they live. It's, you can see in those pictures, it's kind of an eyesore. You ought to take a ride out there and look at it. So I don't know if anything would improve over what he's done in the past as to what the future will be like. Now, I've got an application here to the Mississippi Environmental Geology Office that he wants to mine 18 acres 10 feet deep, and your report says four feet deep, is what I heard, but on here, it says 10 feet deep. I asked him about that, and he said, oh, no, that's wrong. He said, I'm just going to cut down two hills and plant grass and sell it. And then he said, if I can't sell it, I'm going to put a subdivision in. I kind of took that as a threat, you know, for me to be quiet, or I'm going, I'm going to put a subdivision in behind your lake. I may be wrong about that, but that was just my opinion. My two concerns are, oh, and by the way, this, this ditch I was telling you about, I asked him about the ditch and why he hadn't filled it in. Oh, that ditch was there when I bought the property. Well, that may be true, but the people that owned the property before you had a nice pasture out there, they weren't mining dirt out of the place, and so I wasn't getting muddy water coming in the pond. Anyway, that was his, I thought that it was his responsibility to contain water in his property and keep it from running on somebody else's. My suggestion is right now, and you may not like it, I wouldn't approve anything until he's complied with how to keep water and dirt on his property, and let him do that first before we have any approval of anything. And I would like for the permit to say exactly what he's going to do, not a blanket 18 acres 10 feet deep, because then you don't know what's going to go on. And he's proven in the past that he's... I don't think he'll comply with whatever is said. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank y'all for allowing us to come up here and give our little information.
Sure.
My name is Connie Terry. My family and I bought the property. It was all one big section. The parkers sold that. They sold about three and a half to four acres to us. The address is 1124 Highway 469 North. So when I raise my garage door every morning, and I don't even have to step out of my house, I see this. It's ugly. There's dust flying. There's always been dust flying. There's never been a truck out there to control the dust, ever. Again, with what Mr. Padelford has just said, initially, when we bought the place in March of 15, nothing was ever disclosed about what was going on. No information was given. If we would've known then, we wouldn't have bought the place. It is definitely an eyesore. The ditch that he's referring to, it was a very gentle sloping. So whenever it would rain, we'd have a little, very small little creek area that would filter on through to Mr. Padelford's lake. There is so much erosion that has taken place, still happening on my property today, that my son, my 17-year-old son, can probably stand in this hole and it'd be up to about his waist. There is silt fence that is from property line. Our property line is... We share property lines with Mr. Williamson. There is silt fence over halfway onto my property that is embedded in the dirt so bad, we can't pull it up. It gets hung up on the disc on our tractor. Initially, he had hired some loggers to go and kinda clean the area up. There was a property line put up with a little flag on it. That was taken out and thrown. We went back and we placed it, thrown again. His loggers went onto our property and took 10 to 12 great big huge oak trees. I don't have pictures of those. My husband has pictures. He works at Hambill. He's not here today. Nothing was ever done about that. Nothing was ever, "Oh, I'm sorry." When I contacted him, he just simply gave me the statement that he has no control over what those loggers do. So my husband was like... He was working in Texas at that time. I just had a total near replacement. And my husband was like, "Don't. Just give him a chance to make it right. Give him a chance." He never did. I told him I needed to have the stumps pulled. He said he was gonna pull them. He was gonna backfill it. He was gonna this and that, smooth it all out. And he was gonna plant grass, and they went in and pretty much just made a mess of it back there. That's never happened. Well, let me back up. The stumps have been pulled. Nothing else has happened. We did all that ourselves last summer. But again, the silt fence is still there. The erosion is still going on today. If anybody would like to take a little drive out there, I'd be more than happy to show it to you. I have horses back there now, and he called me on May 2nd telling me that he knew that I had received a certified copy of this application. I did not. I've never, my family nor I have ever received anything except for this time around.
Oh, for this, for this? You didn't receive something for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I did not receive the application. I did not receive a letter, didn't for any of this at all.
You told me several years ago.
Prior.
Prior to this?
Correct.
Okay.
The letter that I received with this today has been the first piece of documentation that I've received. Mr. Padelford called me and asked me if I had known anything about it. I said, "No." So I went by. He printed off the copy of the application. And it lists on there people who were directly affected. Terries aren't on there. Everybody else seems to be on there. Terries aren't on there. So I in turn called Mr... I'm probably gonna butcher the guy's name, Methany, at the geology department that Mr. Padelford was referring to. I called him. And I was a little irate, yes. And he explained to me that his office does not go out and investigate, that that information was provided by Mr. Williamson, and that, yes, our name was not on there. And was it intentional or was it not intentional? Nobody really knows. But again, the application was for 18 acres, 10 feet deep. He called me May 2nd telling me, "I don't have a clue why they did that. I didn't do that. They did that." I said, "Well, why would they do that? Why would that office do that?" "Well, I don't know." And then he came back and he said, "His engineers did that," but his name is signed to the bottom of it. So I have a lot of concerns myself because my property sits between his and Mr. Padelford's. So again, I'd be happy to show anybody. There's sand. I don't have any sand on my property. I haven't done any dirt work on my property, but there is sand that has run from that property through our property into his property. We have put up hay ourselves. I put up a big huge... Or my husband put up a big round belay of hay to stop, hopefully stop it from going into his property, Mr. Padelford's property. Again, like I said, it's, every time it rains, as we all know, the Mont Susan hits, it brings more in, and it tears it up even more. So he, again, he called me May 2nd telling me, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. And then he said that he was gonna have Mr. Padelford arrested for going onto his property without permission. And I said, "Well, you've trespassed onto my property repeatedly. Your loggers did." "Yeah, I know. I don't, I know, I know. I just, you know, he just got busy." Well, that doesn't really help my situation either. So I have high concerns with he saying, or the application says one thing, he's telling you guys something else. Why can't the erosion be controlled? Is it fair to drop all of that water from that property, run through my property and tear it up, onto somebody else's property and tear it up? He's not made one bit of attempt to clean mine up. His silt fence is still in there. And he says, "Well, I can get that out now." "Well, it's a little late. I've got horses back there. We've reseeded it ourselves."
Well, the silt fence is on your property?
Yes, sir. And I have pictures on my phone, but it's embedded. It's embedded so deep in the dirt.
I believe that. I'm just trying to see where it was. You said, I didn't realize it was on your property.
Yes, sir. The silt fence is on my property over three quarters of the way.
Did the water push it down there?
Yes, sir.
So it wasn't initially put on your property?
It, there was, there was some that was initially put, yes, sir.
Okay.
But there is, it was just maybe, I'm not good with footage and all that good stuff, you know, I don't deal with that. But it was, it was not even, maybe a quarter of the way off of that line, and it kinda went at an angle up the hill. But it is, like I said, three quarters of the way
I guess.
From one fence line to the next fence line.
All right. Well, let us, I guess, I think we need to hear from the applicant.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we do too, but one thing, I wanna say, it sounds like, I wanna hear from him, but from what I'm gathering from some of this, and I wanna ask Renee, when did, okay, he got a four acre...
Exactly.
Okay. Were they not notified then?
No.
Or did they have to be?
No.
No, I'm just saying that she had...
And allows those to be done by administrative review, and that's how that was done.
Okay, so four acres, okay, because it's under the four acres. So what basically happened? He got a four acre, and you can do it that way. And then, in his fault, he then mined way more than four acres.
Yes, sir.
Without anybody, basically, the county knowing it. And then the DQ found it, and then he got fined because he had mined way more than the four acres. I think that's what I'm picking up from what you said.
Yes, sir.
All right. So now he's got, okay, he's dug it out. He's through digging, basically, or all he can dig. What he's trying to do, from what I'm seeing here and here, is to basically get it in a point to reclaim it. And when we say reclaim it, that puts it back in a condition to help correct some of the problems that he's created. And if we don't, don't just allow him to do that, then you're gonna continue to have problems. Now, as the county goes, and I wanna hear what he's got to say, but as the county goes, now that we're involved and we have these conditions, and attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, we can hold him to what we say these conditions are that are here. Like, he's only gonna dig four feet, and he's only gonna dig it in certain spots. And I'm gonna ask him, but it sounds like these spots may be places that are maybe high, and they need to be smoothed out. And so he wants to move, move those places. But in those conditions, we could also make sure he, with the conditions we're putting here, and we may have to add something to make sure he does something that's needed to help the erosion or whatever. But if we don't allow him to do this, I don't know how he's gonna help correct the problem that you're having. It could be an ongoing problem, and I think we're trying to, and that's what we want to stress to him, is to try to correct the problem. And so I'm in a, we're in a situation here. If we say, "No, you can't do anything," then the problem's not gonna get corrected.
And I understand that. However, when he called me on May 2nd, which I've got that call logged on my phone. He called me on May 2nd, and he was, "I'm only gonna this. Why are you gonna truck dirt out to fix the problem?" He's wanting to truck all of this dirt out and not bring dirt in.
No. Okay. That's what we'll ask him, but what I'm picturing is he got dirt, dirt pit, hump here, hump here, hump here, whatever. Gonna take this, these out. Then the dirt he brings in is gonna be dirt that you put down to like topsoil-type dirt that you can plant grass on.
I would think he's supposed to have topsoil there.
There's nothing but sand.
He doesn't bring it back in. And he may have some topsoil already there. I don't know. But these are questions I'd like, like to ask him and hear his point of what his intentions are. But I guess what we're looking at is how to correct the problem, allow him to correct the problem that he's made a mess of, the way y'all described it, he's made a mess of, and help correct the problem. And that's where we, as the county, can help enforce that. And if we, well, we can.
I hope.
Huh?
I said, "I hope."
Well, we can.
It's, I mean, my vehicle stayed dusty. My house is dusty. There's, there's, there's never, ever... I quit working at Merritt Health in 2018, so I'm at home. I stay at home. And there is, you know, I hear trucks at 6 o'clock in the morning, beep, 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 you know, until late at night. It's, it's just a, and I understand business is business is business. However, residents or the residents in the area are having to...
Let us hear from Mr. Williamson.
Yeah, let us hear from him. Like I said, we're trying to correct the problem, and we're just sitting here not correcting it.
How you doing? I'm Ronnie Williamson, on the property at 1140 Highway 469 North. And I've had the property since 2015. And I did apply for a four acre permit, and I did dig more than I was supposed to. And after he turned me in, got with DEQ, paid my fine, did everything I was supposed to do, and DEQ did not find me for silt in his lake. They found me for digging over four acres. And I've got aerial shots of his lake. His lake's not dirty.
Well...
And I have got a letter, several, well, several pages from DEQ last week. And they said, "The only runoff I have may be going to the northeast corner. When you come by my pit and you fall in that hill where Scott Webb lives." And I went over there last week, and I bush-hogged. I put five rows of silt fence up. And I have got topsoil piled up in places. But what I wanna do, I've got about three places I wanna cut down, about three or four foot, to get part of the property to drain to the front and the rest to drain to the back. And, but I can't, I can't, I mean, it's gonna be a lot more feasible for me to dig the dirt and sell it than have to push it with a dozer, you know, 500 yards to get it where I need to. But if I can dig those areas down and then level it all up and then put the topsoil back on and plant it.
So, Ms. Williams, you've obviously got some neighbors that are upset with you.
Oh, I know. They are, but the one on the other side is not.
Well, he must've been on the high side.
They're on the high side.
Anyway, what we're trying to do, trying to work out something to resolve the problem. And I see, I understand what you're trying to do, and that's what I was trying to express to them, is you're trying to take the, and I understand, and I was trying to say, if we can hold him to the four acres, I mean, excuse me, the four feet, the four feet, we can do that. And we can do that, and if he doesn't, we can withdraw this condition, conditional use. The attorney, attorney can explain it. We're pretty, this will be pretty hardcore.
How long is the timeframe?
I like to have it two years. And I'm making move it quicker. There's a subdivision back toward Brandon, and he's gonna need a good bit of dirt. And I told him I didn't have that much dirt, but I could get rid of what I had.
I think it'd make your neighbors happy if you can push this along, get this resolved and...
I mean, I don't know if I can do it within a year since it's already June, and I'm wait, I'm still waiting on DEQ to give me the approval.
Okay, that's, that's something I wanna ask. Okay, so you couldn't dig anything from the time, let's just say, maybe...
I have not dug since December of '21. I have not dug anything over there.
So DEQ shut you down?
Mm-hmm.
And so you couldn't do anything? So what you're trying to do, and I think that's why you came to the county, Craig, explained to me that now DEQ required something in order?
A clearance as it relates to land use and zoning. We don't regulate DEQ and DEQ's areas such as the issue of the size of the exempt mine operation. That's a DEQ requirement?
Wait, can y'all hear him? Hear what he's saying? Okay.
The, the, the fact that it qualifies for an exempt mine permit, that is a DEQ consideration? We require, under a zoning, a conditional use application for even an exempt mining operation. So an exempt mining operation has to come to us first and ask the question, is there a land use prohibition on an exempt mine at that spot? When we say there is no land use prohibition, DEQ moves forward with their process. Their process is set up your silt fences, stay within your full mine, four acre mine operation. If you get outside of that boundary, you're subject to being what happened to Mr. Williamson, what happened to him. And so that's a DEQ piece of this. It's a little bit of a two-step. We control the land use, and then through our conditions that we set, we control things like haul routes, hours of operation, dust control. All those things that I went through are areas that this board has historically attempted to stay on top of these issues, especially where you've got the use and the population close by, where you've got the potential for conflict. We try our best to set terms and conditions so that the operator of the mine doesn't impose unnecessarily on neighbors, right? There's gonna be noise. There's gonna be traffic. There's gonna be dust. There's gonna be issues. But the hope is that those are relatively short-term. So if Mr. Williamson is committed to get this resolved, it would be my suggestion, let's look at a one-year conditional use application. It's a one-year timeframe. And Mr. Williamson needs to do everything in his power to get all, but he needs to get done, done within that timeframe. And then we shut it down. It's grassed, topsoil, ain't no more dust, ain't no more traffic. We're done.
The only problem I have with that is I applied for my DEQ permit. After I paid my fine in March 15 of last year, I'm still waiting on a permit. And every time I send them something, it's something else. They just keep dragging it out. They don't wanna give me a permit. But they were glad to take my check for the fine and the permit money. So who knows? This could take another six months to a year, or I may never get it.
Based on what I'm understanding from Ms. Renee, this is what they're waiting on. They're waiting on the county to give the final checkoff that says he has cleared Rankin County land use regulations with respect to his application.
Yeah, 'cause this has been 15 months coming on.
How much of the property do you have to move, to move dirt around?
How many acres is it?
Now, how much do you have to move around?
It's like three spots. It, that's a little high, and I wanna get it down to where it drains right.
So just those three spots, and the rest of it, you don't have to touch?
The front part out front... Mm, the front part out front, you said it there. It's all grassed, I bush hogged it the other day. It drains fine, I'm not gonna touch it yet.
Why don't we do this? Whenever you start the mining process, why don't you take the first hill closest to their property, get that one knocked out first, go ahead reclaim everything you got out there since you don't have to touch nothing, and you go and start the reclamation process, uh, move things a lot quicker along, they'll have less sedimentation coming on. That way, kinda be a win-win for them.
They don't have anything coming on them now.
Well, whatever, whatever.
'Cause after DEQ's...
Well, we're not, I mean, we, whether they do or don't, um, that's not our, what he said, basically, I think what Jay trying to say, make an effort that you're, you take that spot down, the one that's affected, maybe say them the most, and go and kinda get that fixed to help stop that. Oh, and, and something else, I had a thought on, the, the, uh, time, the year would start whenever he gets the okay from DEQ.
Okay.
Meaning if it's two months, then that would be when his time would start. I was, all we're trying to do is get it cleaned up, and if we don't do anything, he's not gonna get it cleaned up, he's just gonna keep the mess there.
Yeah, I can't sell the property then.
And so that's all I'm trying to work out, and I think that would work, I, I hope that will work with everybody, 'cause, and we can hold him to that, to this, but, uh, could we start the year when you get your application from them? That way, if they try to go three months. Yeah, they try to go three months, it's not his fault.
I gotta go to a hearing Friday.
Huh?
I gotta go to a hearing Friday.
Okay.
Or that's what they said.
Well, and I do know that, that, um, right, he couldn't do anything, DEQ wouldn't allow anything till he came, till he, this came here.
I can haul dirt in, I can't haul dirt out.
Right. But I mean, they wouldn't let that until, let this process happen until it came through us. So I'm trying to get a compromise, so we gotta do something. We can't leave the ice ore there that y'all, you have a problem with. And, um, so, it, uh, as far as conditions, uh, you know, his own here at seven thirty is when he can start, not at six o'clock. So, I'd say, Ronnie, hold that to, don't have him showing up at six thirty and then load at seven thirty, have him showing up at seven thirty. I mean, I'm, I'm asking you all the same thing, everybody to try to agree, we need to work something out between the, between you, because we gotta get it resolved. And he's talking about Monday through Saturday, and I understand Saturday's an important, important day because of, but I mean, that's what we're asking, Monday through Saturday, start at seven thirty, and would end, uh, we don't have an ending.
Sunset.
Huh?
Sunset.
Sunset. Sunset.
Yeah, I ain't got a problem with the dark, but the seven thirty's a little late. I think most everybody's up and going by seven.
Well, I'm just trying to get something.
And that's late.
Something, I'm trying to, I'm trying to help everybody here.
I know, I know, and I'm trying to fight weather a lot of times and beat the rain.
Yeah.
Nobody likes a dirt pit, nobody likes dump trucks, y'all know that.
I, yeah, well, and that's what we're trying to get this worked out.
Till they get their house, their pad done on the house, they're fine then, you know.
So, I'm asking, I'm asking all three of you, is this something we can get a compromise? Okay. I appreciate that. Ma'am?
I mean, it needs to be finished, I know, I mean, it needs to be...
Or, or you can buy it, you can buy it.
No, no. No, hey, hey, hey.
All right, all right.
Hey, that's enough.
We don't need to come.
No, it need, either way, I mean, the problem is, is a, is a bad, something bad we're trying to get it fixed.
And, and that's understandable, why just switch it?
Okay. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna try to push that.
We negotiated way before when we tried to do that.
Well, it, it wasn't here, and we hadn't, we weren't a part of this, as far as setting this and that. The four acres are all we were a part of, and then it, I understand, and it went further. And then it got, uh, and that's when DEQ got involved. Honestly, if you all had let us know this earlier, we might could have done something earlier.
So we, uh, let me, let me recap, guys, uh, these conditions so that it's clear to everybody, the hours of operation that are being proposed by the staff, seven thirty a.m. to sunset, Monday through Saturday.
Y'all need seven thirty, or would y'all compromise at seven?
Does it matter to y'all what time he starts?
Would you like to live next door in here?
Do what?
I just said, would you like to live next, directly next door in, in the year and see it all day long?
I, I think seven thirty, Jared, is probably the best we're gonna get, I, I would say. Let's just set it at seven thirty and move along.
Well, that's what I was asking, one said seven, the other one said seven.
This time of year, that's gonna give him, you know, thirteen plus hours, uh, of being able to do haul activity Monday through Saturday, uh, during the day. So, at least during this, uh, th- this point in time in the year, assuming DEQ comes through with their permit, he can go on and take advantage of longer daylight hours. Uh, so the hours of operation, seven thirty, uh, a.m. to sunset, Monday through Saturday. Uh, we, we will need signage to be installed, uh, at the points of entry and exit to the pit to warn traffic about trucks entering and exiting the roadway. Uh, we'll need a flagman at four sixty-nine north, which is gonna be, uh, required, uh, to operate beginning at seven thirty through, uh, through sunset. Uh, we're gonna need a, the eighteen acres, as shown, uh, the conditional use permit would be granted for eighteen acres, as shown on the MDEQ application that has been filed, and it's a surface mining operation. Uh, the conditional use permit, as Jared mentioned, will, uh, will be granted, will be, will run, have an effective date from the date that DEQ finally permits the operation, and will proceed for one year, one calendar year. Okay, so if, if he gets his permit in the next two weeks, that's when the ti- uh, the timeframe will run, it'll run for a year. If it's two months, it'll start at two months from now and run commensurately until, for one year. And so it's just gonna track for a year from the day he gets his M, MDEQ permit, final permit. Uh, onsite water truck is required during all hours of operation to address all dust conditions. Applicant is required to monitor the speed of the haulers in the vicinity of the pit. He's, he is required to use every means at his disposal to prevent speeding or unsafe driving practices. He's required to clean all dirt and debris from the public road on a daily basis, and then as the day's activities are undertaken, he will see that the road is maintained in a passable condition. The applicant will secure from the road department a specific haul route for all dirt hauling activities and will strictly enforce that haul route.
This is state aid. This is, this is state road.
Yeah, I understand, but, but...
But he could go left or right.
But the haul route, I just wanna make sure that the road department has a way to speak on the issue of any sort of deviation from that onto county public road. We wanna prevent that?
I'm saying it is a state road, it's a four sixty-nine.
I understand. Uh, uh, I don't know where those dirt, I don't know where those haulers are going.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure you knew that it was four sixty-nine state road.
Very good. Uh, and then, uh, so there, there will be a designated haul route, once it's determined where the dirt's actually going, we wanna make sure that there's a haul route for that. Uh, and then, uh, i- if there is any damage, uh, that is discovered as a result of any of the hauling activities, whatever those may be, he's required to notify the road department that he's, he's observing damage, uh, to the road. Okay? So those would be the conditions that we would propose. Uh, at this time, it'll be appropriate to take action with consideration being given to the recommendation on conditions.
All right. Are y'all good, the three parties that are here? Y'all, y'all can work with that? Yeah? Sir, you do, you okay? All right, Ronnie? All right. That's why I'm just trying to get the compromise, we get this done. The only thing, uh, and if this would help y'all, he's identified the places he wants to dig. If that'll help us, help you all, for us to identify them, so, you know, we know where he's digging, if he was like that. That's the only thing, 'cause he identified, he had certain places he needed to dig.
I'd like to see that in writing.
Well, that would be, we could actually be on par.
Yeah, what, what we can ask, uh, and we have done this, by the way, in the past, actually have, uh, staking, have a survey go out and stake the areas where the digging activity will be conducted.
Yeah, I have that.
Just have it staked, staked and flagged.
That'd be good.
I, I would like to second what Mr. Dufferty says, is something in writing as well?
Yeah, it'll be in writing because it's in our minutes.
The application says one thing and now something else, that's all.
No, it will, it will, that's what he's saying.
It's gonna be in the conditions.
He would be, we would have it. Yes, first we have to have that. Uh, Ronnie, can you handle that, we do that? Yeah? So, I mean, we'll have that, once we identify it, it'll be what, what it is, and we'll have it then.
So that's one additional condition, and these conditions are in writing. Uh, the, the one additional condition is that the applicant will stake the areas where the hauling, where the dirt, where the soil removal activities will take place, those will be staked, uh, by a surveyor with flagging.
And approved, and, and we'll check it out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. I think that's the best we can cover it, and then hopefully to get, uh, the whole situation resolved, y'all, for everybody. Okay?
All right. So at this time, it'll be appropriate to take action.
Well, I, I make a motion to prove that under these conditions we said, that all, we'll all, that are, will all be in writing and under these conditions that we stated.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Jared, taken by Brad, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye's aye.
All right, I hope we got this worked out for everybody.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll, we'll monitor it, and, uh, I'm sure he'll let us know, and y'all let us know, I know y'all help monitor too.
So that, uh, that matter is closed, Mr. President, for the record. Item E, Mr. President, is a public hearing on the Grant Thompson conditional use permit request at nine sixty-eight Woodrow Martin Road. This is District Three property. I've managed to, here we go. Mr. Thompson is seeking, is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a wedding and events venue at nine sixty-eight Woodrow Martin Road. This, Mr. Thompson started construction of a five thousand five hundred square foot metal building to be used as a deer camp. He's proposing to use the first floor for weddings and events, the second floor will be used as a deer camp and will not be accessible by the public during weddings and events. It's a two hundred acre parcel, property is zone A two, I actually think it's larger than that.
It's more than two hundred.
It's two hundred forty-eight.
Two hundred forty-eight acres, okay. Uh, tax assessor appreciates Mr. Thompson coming clean on how much acreage he needs to be assessed for. Property is zone A two. Property is zone A two, property was posted and the hearing notice has been published. Uh, we received several calls, one was in opposition, uh, not, just not happy about the use and the increased traffic in the area. Uh, so at this time, we'll open that public hearing. We do have some condi- uh, some conditions that we would propose, Mr. President, that I will be glad to identify. But at this time, before we get going on that, I, I want to open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone here to speak publicly in opposition to Mr. Thompson's conditional use permit? Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We do have conditions that I'm, uh, ready to go through, if y'all are ready to receive those.
Yes, sir.
The venue cannot be used for events other than family members, other than family members, until a set of seal plans are received by the county. That's number one. An inspection of life safety items is conducted by the bidding, building official after receipt of the seal plans. And then any items that may be noted as non-compliant as a result of that inspection must be corrected before a building permit is issued. So, family events will be permitted, but no other events can be scheduled until such time as those conditions are met. That's the first. The second one, access to the second floor must be blocked off and posted as private so that no wedding event or other event, uh, invitees are allowed to go upstairs. That is not going to be an assembly space upstairs, it won't be inspected as such. Uh, the occupancy load must be determined by this architect or engineer, whoever's gonna provide the seal plans. They need to denote with the occupancy load, and that occupancy load must be posted at the entrance to the venue. Uh, the applicant is going to be required to submit a copy of a food service permit from the Mississippi State Department of Health, and this has to do with the size of the kitchen facilities that are on site. Uh, and we're gonna need your help to set hours of operation. Uh, so again, uh, those would be the conditions. Uh, the applicant is present if the board has, uh, need to discuss anything with the applicant.
I got a question, and I think we spoke on this the other day about the food service permit from Mississippi State Department of Health. I mean, if he's not, if they not preparing or cooking food there, I mean, is that still? Most of this is catered and being...
One hundred percent of it's catered. We, uh, we, we have no desire at all to prepare any food or serve any food, it's a staging area for a caterer. So, I mean, even to the point that if there is a cooking, there's a, there's a stove and a cooktop in there, but if I had to have that off limits or turned off, I could do that the day of an event, and ju- because it's just gonna be personal use. We have no desire to use this kitchen to prepare and serve food to the public.
Yeah, I think the issue was for our staff, and Renee jumped in here, but I think the issue was, if in the event you had the ability to prepare food for an event, then it triggers the responsibility for the food service licensure process.
Okay.
So, we gotta figure out a way, uh, so that an event can happen there, but that, that the organizers of the event are not gonna be in a position where they're actually preparing food for that event.
I totally get it, and I'm, I can handle that. My, my question is, with the only way they could prepare it was in that one cooking stove and oven, if I could, uh, completely eliminate that and have it where it's turned off and not available at all, I mean, we can actually have a turnoff valve that it does not make it available to the public. The rest of the kitchen is just a staging area, stainless steel, serving tray.
Sure. Such food.
I think we can cover it by simply, the, the materials that are made available for public consumption should state very clearly, no onsite food service preparations available, all food must be catered, something like that?
We can put that in our terms and conditions.
I think that's what we're gonna need to do, Grant. That, that keeps our guys from being put in a position where something happens and we get asked, why didn't you...
First of all, I wanna do what we need to do. I mean, I mean, period, we wanna do whatever's needed, but if I can get away with having something that's conditional in the permit that says, or in my contract that says, we do not supply or, or prepare food, and we're not, at all, we have no desire to do that.
Or allow them to prepare food. Vendor can't use the kitchen facilities like the cooktops.
All food must be brought on site already prepared.
Correct. Correct. We can, we can do that.
Catering.
Cater.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Caterers are gonna love you.
Well, y'all had a big, uh, big weekend, didn't you?
We had a big weekend, and it was a, we were blessed, it was a lot of fun, a lot of fun. It worked out, we pushed it to the last minute, but I thank y'all, and I appreciate that time.
Is there, is there a need to address hours of operation?
I don't have a need.
Okay.
All right.
I mean...
Where are your motion?
Y'all use good judgment on hours of operation.
Okay. We can three young ladies, if you have a side, we don't have a problem doing that.
Well, I mean, I mean, it's two hundred, or two hundred and forty-eight acres in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think it's gonna be...
Yeah, and traffic is, no, no traffic.
We're just not gonna set those, y'all set that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brad to approve, taken by Jared, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye's aye.
Uh, from time to time, gentlemen, the item F, and by the way, that, item E, public hearing is closed. Uh, item F is a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Rankin County Solid Waste Management Plan that's, uh, filed by Maintenance Systems, Inc.
Tim, is this, uh, is this the inject, the clean theme, thing?
Bio-solid stuff, okay. Bio-solid stuff, okay, so from time to time, we have a request, gentlemen, from a bio-solidst application outfit, you may remember something, Tara, something, something other, something other, we've granted these in the past.
Right.
These are primarily in ag, land use situations. They are application of bio-solidst as a fertilizing type of activity, hay, growing hay, and that type of thing is mostly cattle grazing, grazing, livestock grazing activity, that's what this is. And anytime we get an application for where additional properties are being brought online for these applications, we have to amend the solid waste management plan. To do that, we have to have a public hearing, that public hearing has been noticed for today. So at this time, I will ask, that public hearing is open, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak about the proposed amendment to the Rankin County Solid Waste Management Plan filed by Maintenance Systems, Inc. Is anyone here to speak on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter, at this time, we will close that public hearing, and it is now appropriate for us to take action on the proposed amendment filed by solid waste, I'm sorry, Maintenance Systems, Inc., to the solid waste management plan.
Make motion approved.
Motion by Jared, second by Brad, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Alright. Gentlemen, I have one item in executive session that I need to take up with you, please, and I have one additional business item as well.
Mr. Six?
Good morning, item A is authority for me to sign a modification to the MDEQ municipal county water infrastructure agreement, and it's to document the county's compliance with Title VI.
I don't know really what it even talking about.
This is our ARPA reimbursement from DEQ portion, they're requiring us to...
I didn't know what Title VI was, so...
It's the Civil Rights Act.
Yeah.
Never complying with it?
Yes, sir.
Make motion approved.
Motion by Jared, second by Brad, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Alright, item B is authority to issue a check for $14,942.49 to refund an amount overpaid by Circuit Clerk Becky Boyd for her purse contributions.
Okay. Motion D.
Second.
Motion by Jared, second by Brad, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
I would discuss.
Ayes have it.
Item C is approval for Rankin County to accept a 48-month lease purchase financing agreement with Trustmark, and this is for a new 415 loader with $45,000 buyback and authority to execute those documents. This is the last piece of equipment we'll be buying for quite some time, or purchasing.
For six months, anyway.
Hopefully over a year.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brad?
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion?
What is the 45,000 buyback, okay, what's it cost?
At the end of the, I believe this was 115? Was the total cost?
How much?
It was 115.
Alright. Alright.
What is it, what term is the buyback? Four years, I guess?
Four, 48 months.
Okay, alright.
48 months? Oh, no, 48, yeah, 48.
Is that all discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Alright. Additional business?
Only additional I had, I want to talk about the...
Yeah. Come on up, Mike.
Come on, Mike. I just wanted to ask, we did, you said you're going to start micro. What's micro, are we going to micro and then we're going to, oh, yeah, not micro.
Chip seal.
We're going to chip seal, then we're going to micro, or slurry over, or something, over, correct?
We usually either do a chip seal and we'll come in with a fog seal on top of it, which turns it black, Jared, where we can stripe it and make, stripe them pop out on it.
What does that run a mile?
Uh, this year it's going to run about 42,000 to 45,000 a mile.
Just doing a fog seal over it?
That's doing a fog seal over it. The micro's going to run about 55,000 a mile this year, looking at the new numbers we've got.
With the chip seal, including the chip seal?
That...
That's the package, that's a finished deal.
Well, depends on what we do it, Jared, a lot of times if we're just going to do a, we call it double bitumus, we do a double chip seal, which that's usually what we do if we just put a fog seal on it. That runs about 42,000 to 45,000. Now, if we just do one layer and do a fog seal over it, you can cut that about in half on it.
But whenever we do micro, T L Wallace actually does all the chip seal, and then, we do the chip seal?
We do the chip seal, yes.
And then they just come in and put the micro on top, that's all they do?
We do the, we do the fog or slurry, what do you call it?
We do the fog and the, and the, and the chip seal, yes, sir, our seal.
So, I think what Jared's trying to get to is, looking at possibility of going with the ultra-thin versus doing micro.
That's, that's fine, I mean, it's going to run, the ultra-thin's going to run about, I think we come up about 80 a mile. 80,000 versus, so it's about $40,000 more. Not quite 40, but, I mean, like I said, 55, 40, we've done some ultra-thin, let some POs go, where it looked like it's, the estimate's running about 55,000.
You have done some ultra-thin, have we done some of it?
We've done some in the past, yes, sir.
I thought we did that causeway.
We did the causeways, held up very good, we did that probably.
Old Lake Road was chip sealed and...
No, you're talking about ultra, you're talking about ultra.
I reckon we did the causeways five years ago.
Five years, don't ask me.
Been quite a few.
All runs together.
You don't chip, you know, this is just straight ultra.
But usually, you lose, usually you ultra-thin, your pavement preservation products, Jared, you really need to put something down, like the rock or tar to seal the cracks, so it won't come back through. That's typically why you cracks come back through your asphalt, because if there's a crack, if there's a crack under it, it's going to show back up in the top.
The ultra-thin, I mean, but some of that can be put down, just like asphalt, it's just...
Yeah, you end up with somewhere, they put down about an inch and a quarter, you end up with about an inch to seven eighths thickness of a material. It's just, it's got more sand and a finer rock in it, so, as long as you've got a good structure under you, it seems to be holding up good. Like I said, we put it on that causeway and it's done a great job.
So you just put it down straight on the causeway?
No, we, we chip sealed the causeway.
Yeah, it costs more, we chip sealed it and then did those thin.
Oh, that's what I was asking.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we do like on Old Lake Road.
We put the rock, tar on the causeway.
That's a, you know, that's a superly heavy travel road, you know, so...
Yeah, but I, that's what I'm trying...
I think some other places where we could use old stand, we wouldn't have to do that.
Yeah, I was just thinking about like in the Triangle Acres area, that's not heavily traveled, you know, just because it's in that neighborhood, we're talking about doing all the roads.
Right, well typically, what we're going, what we would do, something like that, Triangle Acres, like you're talking about, we would come in and do what I call a scrub seal, that's where we shoot the emulsion out and drag a broom, pushes that emulsion into the cracks. We'll put the rock on top of it, you got to put something on top of it. And then in a few days, they'll follow up, I think we have to let it set 48 hours, and after that, then they come in with an ultra-thin on top of it.
So it's similar to the micro?
It's similar to the micro, you get a little more structure number out of it, I don't know...
Who does the ultra?
But I mean, it's not a lot of difference in the structure number.
Who does the ultra-thin, they, who puts it down?
Oh, well, John Harold's had the contract, but I don't know, I'd have to look at the new bids, I think, I think I may have swapped hands the next, this next round. But we'll have that authorized for y'all on the 15th.
I don't know.
But we don't know, but, okay. Alright, well...
I mean, either him or Mr. Ralph will have, uh, I haven't wanted to.
What if we wanted to get away from that altogether and just go with rather than putting asphalt down as thick as we do, go with a thinner layer asphalt?
You can just, typically about an inch and a half is as thin as you can lay it.
Oh, really?
Just because of the, I mean, structurally.
Right.
You know, once it's compressed.
Yeah.
Because the rocks that's used in your asphalt is bigger than that, you know, if you get to going less than that, you're going to leave drag marks, you know, all in your asphalt, you're going to have that smooth finish.
It'll be too thin.
It'll be too thin, and your rocks will start poking.
Poke through.
Poke through. So, yeah, well, I mean, we cut back on some of them that was just needed shaping up, leveling up, you know, we cut back to some inch and a half this year, you know, on some of it, some of it we went to two because of the way the road was. So we kind of play it by ear however the road is, we usually typically lay one to two inches compacted is the most we do. Now, a lot of people kind of take that for granted, and they'll look at the edge of the road. Typically, when we pave a road, we cap over the edge, so it's going to look thicker than what you're originally seeing, but we let that asphalt fall off that edge and you gain just maybe a inch of width out of it.
So you're saying basically, we spend $10,000 more doing ultra-thin versus micro, per mile?
Uh, you said 10, 65, uh, I'd say 15.
45, 55.
Uh.
Did I, did I not hear?
55 for ultra-teen, I mean, for micro.
Oh, I thought it was 45.
Uh.
Alright, 55, and then what's ultra-thin?
Running about 80,000 a mile.
Okay, 15,000, alright, yeah.
What's running 80,000 a mile?
Ultra-thin.
Mike, that's not with the chip under it, though, is it?
No, that's just, that's just the asphalt product, that.
Oh, okay, alright.
I try to keep them separate because I do it separately, I do the chip seal, which like I said, you might as well say $20,000 a mile on each. If you do a two-layer chip seal, that's 40.
So whenever we do ultra-thin, do we do any work prior to that?
Yes, sir.
We do the chip seal?
We do the base, come in, do the base.
Just like we do micro?
That's right.
Do you have that cost factored in?
Yeah.
Is that part of the 80?
Well, if you do the 80 and another layer, you're looking at 100,000 a mile, if I work in the contractor for it.
And we're getting asphalt laid for 108 now?
Hmm.
107, I think, was the last bid. Or 107?
Yeah. No, that's a ton, now you...
Oh, that's not for a mile, okay.
I ain't got my phone, y'all have got it, I don't have my phone.
You got a calculator, huh?
Well, it's like 1,600 times a mile, 5,000, 5,820 feet.
Hang on, say it one more time?
5280.
5280.
5,280 feet.
Times 1,700 tons.
Let my, my application over here.
Yeah.
I'll allow you in here.
I'll have to retype it in now. How much is?
He figured it up over here. He figured it up?
I'm waiting on it, Jared.
What do you mean, figure?
I thought he was figuring it out.
Times a mile.
It's 1,700 tons, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just 1,700 tons.
Tom.
Where, where am I facing?
107 a ton.
122 right now.
181,900.
That's put down.
I guess that's two inches, two inches of asphalt?
That's two inches of asphalt.
It's going to run you 180,000.
Oh, God, yeah, that's a lot more.
Yeah.
Almost 200,000, oh, my God.
Yeah, yeah, we was when I first got to work here, like, we was laying asphalt for 110 a mile, right?
That's why we need our own asphalt plant. We could, we could cut that in half for our own asphalt plant. Man, we can't keep up with what we got.
But, yes, Jared, I mean, we, we just look at it and look at the road texture and see what we got on it. But it is, it does cost a little bit more to do those things.
I just didn't realize you had to put the chip seal down first.
Typically, we do, it just, it just makes the product work so much better, I mean, if you don't, you don't get some...
I've been thinking about the road, I don't, I don't...
Well, I can tell you a road you familiar with, like Clear Rock. We didn't put the rock and tar down, and you see where we're getting some pop-ups out of the micro, it's just where it didn't bond to the road, and where the stuff, where the stuff, water...
Right, but that done years ago.
I know, but it's just stuff coming up through the cracks and, and we just never got the road sealed for the micro, we just had better luck.
It's held up pretty good, though, considering.
If I can, if I can get the rock and tar down before I put the micro down, it just, it just sticks and makes it so much better road out of it.
Alright, on another...
We're getting longer.
On another, another subject, I got you here.
Aye.
Alright, the striping, the striping we can do, we got a striping machine and all.
Yes, sir.
Alright, just like Myers Road, I've been getting some calls and it, and I went down to the, and sure enough, you can't hardly see the lines. First off, you go, I don't think it's, it's striped, if that's how faded they are.
Did we stripe it?
Huh?
Did we stripe it?
No, not saying it needs to be striped.
Okay.
And I understand, Jared, I got a bunch of roads I need to, I need to strike.
Yeah.
And I think that's where I was getting at, where I was at the beginning.
That's why he's saying he only got 60 employees.
I mean, we're trying to manage all this and do all this with everybody, but, I mean, we're still, I don't know what's going on this year, but we're still getting 10 to 15 work orders in a day.
Oh, I understand, I understand, I understand, we paid a premium for that, that machine.
Yeah, but I mean, it's just, it usually dies off when it dry, it starts drying, and it just happens, Jake. I mean, it's just, everybody's just, you know, is calling about something, and I understand everybody's going around seeing everybody in that situation, but we have just been, plus, we've had all this overlay we've done, and we've been just, we've been running hard. I mean, we've had a definitely dry year, we're trying to get to everything, it's just y'all bear with us, we'll get to it.
How many employees do you run normally?
Uh, sorry.
High 60s?
High 60s.
68.
68.
We're at minus six employees, you're down a crew.
Down a crew.
Well, why do we get down a crew?
Quit it.
Well, I'm just saying, if we do this one coming up...
But you got to keep, you got to keep, I just won't say it.
It's based on the last three years.
You got to keep payroll and everything in sync with three years.
Covid, some workplace employees, as much, three years ago.
Covid kind of kicked us this year.
We have to, by state law, we have to maintain a certain level of employees.
State law said, get your number of employees for an election year in line with your average over the past three years, that's what we had to do.
Well, I thought we've been up, up to 65 or more.
I think there was one, that, three years ago, that number went down pretty soon.
Yeah, Covid, Covid hit our budget.
Covid probably did.
Yeah, at times during the year, you may have been, but you have to look at specific months over the last three years to determine your number.
Man, we're not down, we're not down key people, Jared.
May, June, July, and August.
But we're, we're down on labor and health, you know, that's where we're down at. I mean, we still got our key people, but I mean, we're just kind of in the middle of the road, is where we're kind of...
Y'all know how this works, this is politics, it's the legislature trying to address campaign-type stuff.
Well, I understand, I understand, but I just didn't understand, we couldn't have figured out, three months ago, the six-month period's coming up, it's going to get...
We did, I did, I did what you said, Jared. I had it up to about 70 at one time, but at some point, we had to balance out.
When you're working on the average, that's...
Average is what got me.
You can't, that's high enough up to make that work out.
Well, that's another reason, I was looking at, trying to figure out another product, we kind of, we'd have, wouldn't take so much manpower, you have a contractor come in and put it down.
Let me ask you this, Greg, if he, if the county decided to take some contract labor like bush hogging, contract bush hogging on some of these rural roads, would that, that wouldn't be part of the road department, I mean...
It's, it's going to impact the road department budget.
And we can't spend, deviate out of the budget, it's not budgeted, so...
Now, E O C can go bush hog.
You hear that, Mike? Your buddy over here. Come out, E O C's budget.
Huh?
Hire a contractor.
It only affects the road, your law's only...
Alright, man, we moving on, you can go sit down now.
I'm getting it correct, Jared.
So we got, with a couple matters under executive session, gentlemen, I need to discuss with you, they're, they're primarily litigation-based, but there's also some economic development in there, so...
I have a motion, discuss the need for executive session?